I'd like to welcome everybody to the Norwood City School District Regular Board Meeting for October 23, 2025. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we discuss fully our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage everyone to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion, which results in actions at these board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Ms. Ballard, absent. Mrs. Rarica?
Present.
Mr. Taylor?
Present.
Mrs. Towner?
Present.
Ms. Atwood?
Present. May I ask everyone to please stand, face the flag, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Since we have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
I think someone wants to amend the agenda.
We do need to amend the agenda. So we realized very close to the meeting schedule that our board reports are not included in this agenda. And so we're going to amend and add Section 9.5, which is going to be our board announcements and reports. So that'll include the any board announcements, the superintendent's report, the Green Oaks report, legislative report, the NTV report, and the Avenues for Success report. May I have a secondary motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second that.
All right.
Did you, you moved?
I moved, and then you seconded.
I second.
All right. Any discussion on the secondary motions?
I believe we need to have hearing of the public too, sir.
Oh, it's on there.
It's on, it's.
Oh, it's on here.
It's on there. It's Section 9.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's just not on the, on the printed out packets.
Perfect.
All right. Any other further discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll on the secondary motion.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right. Now that we've done that and amended to the agenda, can I have a, Mrs. Camp House, can you please call the roll for adopting the agenda?
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner? I'm sorry. Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Couldn't hear.
All right. Now that the agenda is adopted, we can actually have a meeting. Next on our housekeeping list, so these are going to be minutes that we're going to be approving. Item 1.05 is the minutes for the Finance Committee held September 18, 2025. 1.06 is the minutes for the regular board meeting that was held September 18, 2025. 1.07 is the minutes for the Special Board Meeting that was held October 2, 2025. 1.08 is the minutes for the Finance Committee that was held on October 14, 2025. 1.09 is the minutes for the committee meeting that was held October 14, 2025. And 1.10 is the minutes for the Special Board Meeting that was held October 15, 2025. May I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I move to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
We have so many meetings, I feel like it's November already.
Yes, October. Yeah, the last month has been the longest year ever. Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right. With that, we'll get on to item two on our agenda, and this is something that we look forward to every month. This is our Rising Star presentations. And I will turn the floor over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Westman.
Thank you, President Atwood. I am pleased to present our October Rising Stars. We'll start off with our next two Rising Stars.
Perfect.
(applause) Our pointer is our Sharpsburg Rising Star Rock. Every day, Irish steps up to act due to general community and hard stuff. Where the working department for a group, Irish naturally prefer disappears. Proving these fights, showing passion for the action altogether. You know, certainly forces that Irish can carry a family. Congratulations, Irish, you've inspired us all. Next Rising Star is a long, beautiful evening.
And ensures, yeah, lost my spot, that the office runs smoothly and efficiently every day. Ms. Thomas is a natural problem solver, handling any challenge that comes with her with grace and professionalism. She warmly greets parents, staff, and students, always with a smile, and often with a hug when it's needed most. Students feel comfortable sharing successes with her, and she celebrates their good news with genuine joy. Her positive attitude, efficiency, and caring nature have made her an invaluable part of the middle school community. Ms. Thomas truly embodies the spirit of a Norwood star. Congratulations, Melissa. Congratulations to all our winners. I know at this time, our board would like to come shake your hand, and we'll take some more pictures with you in the lobby.
Okay, she was taking. Yeah, lunch them up together. Just move over.
Yeah. Do you guys want me to back too?
So if we could have the little ones say in the front. Actually, the little ones take a step forward. Step forward, step forward, and then you from behind. Step forward, and then you guys.
We got it. Right. Yeah. All right. Perfect.
(inaudible) Irish, put yourself just a little bit, please. There you go. Just a couple more.
All right. Good job.
Now, we're going to take family pictures out in the lobby, and we'll post them on the website tomorrow.
I could text Amber just to see. She might have gotten.
We're going to take family pictures out in the lobby, and we'll post them on the website tomorrow.
I could text Amber just to see. She might have gotten.
All right. We're going to move on with the meeting. So item number three in our agenda, this is a resolution to hire a new treasurer. So part of the reason why we've had so many meetings in the past month and so many special meetings is because we've been going through the interview process. So with that, I am going to make a motion that we pass a resolution to appoint Brandon Jake Johnson as our district treasurer, starting on January 1, 2026. And the reason for that is because Julie's going to be leaving us as of December 31, 2025.
Yeah, for retirement.
So, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? So, here's what I want to say about this process. I think, as board members, right, we're all responsible for hiring two people, responsible for hiring the superintendent, we're responsible for hiring the treasurer. And then we then give those people the authority to run the day-to-day business of the school district. You know, we've had, we had a lot of applicants for the treasurer position. And so there was a multi-level process where we've gone through and had to weed out and go through and whittle down those applicants from, from those who we wanted to interview first, and then those who we wanted to call back. And what struck me is just in the state of Ohio, how few experienced treasures there are available for school districts. Like, there's, there's a massive shortage in qualified treasures in the state of Ohio. I think what we have found with Jake Johnson is somebody, you know, he's coming to us from Mount Healthy, where he was the interim treasurer. And, you know, what impressed me, and I'll let other board members, you know, speak about this if they want to, what impressed me was his ability to step into a very chaotic and negative situation, right? Because Mount Healthy is, you know, enmeshed into a fiscal emergency, and they're controlled by the state. You know, he had to put this plan together that previous treasures at Mount Healthy couldn't get passed through the state. And he was managed to navigate that chaos and, and guide them into something that the state says, this looks good. And, and to be able to handle that as an interim treasurer, I think speaks volumes. So that's what impressed me through his process, his, his knowledge of the art of being a treasurer, for just being an interim treasurer, and his ability to, to manage throughout chaos is, was one of the things that really highlighted to me, and I'll let anybody else talk.
I was going to say same. I feel like he's been through the fire. And so if he can do that, he can certainly handle us. I was impressed with all that he had to do. And didn't, doesn't, isn't he working two jobs there? Payroll and treasurer? He is payroll and treasurer. Like, that's even to more to add to this chaos that he's had to handle. He can, he can handle it. He's, I was amazed.
I'll just say that what really impressed me in the process of interviewing you was that he not only has the know-how, having played two roles at his current position, but his loyalty and his perseverance through a really tough situation. And so I think he will be really well prepared to serve Norwood well, too.
And isn't he presenting to the state tonight, or else he'd be here with us?
Correct.
Yeah, so he, he is not letting them down.
Mike, go ahead.
He persevered, and he could easily give up, and he did. So that's what impressed me about him.
Yeah. So I'll just go ahead and just quickly read this resolution. So it's a, it's a resolution to appoint Brandon Jake Johnson as district treasurer and authorizing the board president and the vice president to enter into a contract with him for the office of district treasurer. The Board of Education of the Norwood City School District met on tonight at the Board of Education office, and we moved to adopt this resolution, whereas as of December 31, will exist a vacancy in the office of treasurer due to a retirement in the district. And whereas Brandon Jake Johnson is licensed by the state of Ohio to occupy the office of treasurer and otherwise possesses outstanding qualifications for the office, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Norwood City School District that the board hereby appoints Brandon Jake Johnson as the treasurer of the Norwood City School District pursuant to the terms and conditions set forth in Exhibit A effective January 1, 2026. And Section 2, the board president and vice president are hereby authorized and directed to execute the contract with Brandon Jake Johnson as attached. It is found and determined that all formal action of this Board of Education concerning or related to the adoption of this resolution was adopted in an open meeting of this board, and all deliberations of this board that resulted in such formal action were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Higher Revised Code. So I move, and Mrs. Rarica seconded, the motion that the above resolution be adopted upon roll call and adoption of the resolution. And Mrs. Camp House, if you call, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
And Mr. Atwood?
Yes. With that passing, it is adopted this 23rd day of October, 2025. And we have a new treasurer starting in January.
Yeah.
But also, we'll really, really, really miss Julie, and I hope that he learns all of Julie's ways.
Hopefully, he's a little bit better with technology than I am. Young people usually are.
We will be introducing him in a future meeting, so, when he's available to join us before he starts. We're going to move on to section number four in our agenda. This is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations. And I'm going to turn the floor over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, President Atwood. The first item is our resignation section, and we have two individuals leaving us, and we do want to thank them for their service. Our next section is 4.02, employment. Number one, we are hiring two aides, one of which will replace one of the individuals who just left us. Under supplementals, these are for clubs and sports that teachers actually sponsor. The next section, avenues for success, they're still hiring. They got a late start due to the withholding of federal funds last summer, so Mrs. Ferguson is still rounding out her staff. Also, we have a classified sub. We'd like to welcome Ava Howard. She's agreed to fill in when people are absent. Then on the next section here, we have a stipend for Mr. Wockett as the marching band assistant director. And I have to say, the band looks wonderful at the football games. At halftime, they do a great performance. Item number three, change in status. The, in fact, three and four, these are items are really individuals moving to a different position or moving from full-time to halftime. And then item number five, pupils' activity contracts. These are for all the individuals, our classified employees, who are coaching winter sports. And as you can see, there's quite a list. And with that, thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. I'd like to move that we approve the superintendent recommendations as presented to us.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right. With that approved, we'll move on to section five in our agenda. This is the Education Committee, and I would like to turn it over to my colleague, Mrs. Rarica.
Thank you. We have Sharpsburg, 5th grade going to Green Acres, the high school, 11th and 12th graders going to the Hamilton County Recorder's Office and going to Mount St. Joe, Norwood View 1st graders going to La Rosa's, and Norwood View 5th graders going to Sinsai Museum Center, Montessori kindergarten to the fire station. That's the cutest. Love that field trip. And the Montessori 3rd and 4th grade going to the Queen's City Food Quest. I motion to approve these field trips.
I'll second. Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right. With that approved, we'll move on to item number six in our agenda. This is the Policy Committee, and I'd like to turn this floor over to my colleague, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to have the second reading of the last one's policies. We'll start with J E C E, which is student withdrawal from school, and J F C J, weapons in the school. They've both been updated to remove driver's license suspension penalties based on House Bill 29. A F C dash 2, also G C N dash 2, evaluation of professional staff administrators, changes to reflect new House Bill 33, legislative changes impacting O D E and S B O E. I G C B, Innovative Education Program. This policy, this policy has been re-titled and revamped. It allows for districts to submit ideas, ideas for programming for approval. Additional changes reflect new House Bill 33, legislative changes impacting O D E and S B O E. E D E dash R, computer and online services. It's been added a few changes to safeguard our district technology devices and safeguard student information. D E C A, administration of federal grant funds, has been revised to reflect changes to the uniform grant guidance requirements. D F R dash R, purchasing procedures, district changes to blanket P O procedures. And J F C K, use of cell phones and electronic communication devices by students, has been revised to reflect changes in the new O D U model policy. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the eight policies for their second reading.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'd just like to say this is the second reading, and so these policies will be fully implemented upon passage. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. With that passing, those policies are now in effect, or those revisions are. We'll move into item number seven, Building and Grounds Committee. We do have five for our approval tonight. Number one is inner-city soccer. They're looking for Shea Stadium for practices and games. A number over 60 dates from October through May. Times may vary. Seven Hill School is looking for approval to use the Norwood High School pool for swim practices on Mondays through Thursdays from 5:15 to 6:45. New City Presbyterian Church would like to use Shea Stadium Field for a flag football game on November 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The Norwood Recreation Department would like to have approval to use the elementary gyms for youth basketball practice Mondays through Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00. And those will be November 3rd through February 19th, which is their basketball season. And then the Norwood Recreation Department would like to use the Norwood Middle School Fieldhouse for the actual youth basketball games. Those are held on Saturdays, and that'll occur from December 6th through February 21st. I'd like to make a motion that we approve usage of our facilities for those items.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I think we would just like to point out that other schools rent our school for our things. So yay us, so yay our pool.
Well, not every school has a pool.
Right. Always like to brag on our, on whatever it is we've got to brag on. Spread the positive news.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right, with that approved, we'll move on to item number eight. That's the Finance Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to our treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do just have a few legal legislative updates. House Bill 186 originally was to squash inflationary growth on fixed-sum levies, but it has been amended to clawback so that taxpayers are refunded in part for the increases they saw on tax revenue based on 2023, 2024 valuations. Part of the clawbacks will be backfilled to schools by the state of Ohio. Based on their early simulations, it looks like this bill will suppress Norwood's new revenues by $4,200,000 over the next two years. Thankfully, I have been conservative in my forecasting of real estate revenues, so hopefully the loss compared to our forecast isn't so overwhelming. The House Bill 186 has passed through the House and is headed to the Senate. House Bill 1335 again has passed through the House and is headed to the Senate. It will cap all growth on inside mills to just the inflationary rate. No simulations have been released to show monetary impact yet. House Bill 309 passed the House and is going to the Senate. Is, gives each county's budget commission authority to reduce any levy deemed unnecessary or excessive. Hamilton County Commissioners have already met today, discussing how much of our inside mills to cut and how to increase homestead enrollbacks with no relief to public schools. This would be an annual loss of over $400,000 annually, annually to Norwood schools. The County Budget Commission will vote October 30th on this decision. All of these bills are written with no changes to state funding. So even the valuations that go to the state, for them to figure out how wealthy school districts are, even those aren't changing so that the state clicks in a little bit more money. Each and every single one of our revenue sources are under attack right now. On the agenda, 8.02 Permanent Appropriations. I'm sorry, our CFO report, Monthly Financials, and Williams Avenue Change Order listing is attached for your review and approval on 8.01. 8.02 is our permanent appropriations, the budget for the current year. 8.03 is amended certificate, estimated revenues for the current year. And 8.04 is a special education agreement with Therapy Works Cincinnati to provide a substitute therapy staff for a long-term absence. And that is it for Finance.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items 8.01 through 8.04 as presented to us.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, say some stuff.
Yeah, so I, I want to make a comment, Mrs. Camp House, especially about your legislative report. Since we're kind of skipped that, you know, on our board reports, I think this is a good opportunity to kind of just talk about that right now. I know you and I had a conversation earlier today, or maybe it was yesterday, regarding some of the stuff that was going through the, the Senate and the House. And the, the clawback item really is what kind of sticks me because they're wanting to go back to 2023 and then clawback revenue that school districts have already received and spent. And so not every school district has a sufficient carryover. So what's, I mean, for example, let's use Mount Healthy as an example, right? Fiscal emergency, they just had to borrow $11 million from the state just so that they can make payroll. Right? So not every district is, is going to be able to withstand that kind of thing. And, and to do that, I think is going to put a lot of districts in a cash flow crunch.
Right.
Right? So now they're talking about backfilling it with other funds.
Part of it. Mm-hmm.
What's that?
Part of it, just part of it.
Right, part of it.
Part of the clawback.
Part of the clawback. What would make more sense is if they took the backfill and that's what they gave back to the taxpayers. Right? Instead of just putting a bunch of, so what you're going to see is you're going to see a ton of school districts. Like, once this goes through both the Senate and the House and gets to the governor's desk to sign, after that, you're going to see a ton of school districts that are just going to throw their hands up and go, what are you doing? Have you lost your mind?
And these are partly due to the real estate evaluations. So that whole, like, how, so because real estate evaluations have gone up, Norwood is seen in a money sense, in a finance sense, as an affluent district now, even though our students are not. But our district is, so we will get less money. We used to get $2,300 per student, but now we're getting...
10%.
800 and something?
800 something dollars per student because now we are affluent. But, but like Julie said, they're not going to change that, but they're going to take that $4 million away, which we got because apparently our, our real estate was worth more money. So they're going to take that money away, call us affluent, say we don't need the money, and they're giving us $800 per student, like mind-blowing, small amount of money.
So...
Like, how are we supposed to?
Right, and, and I think it's important to note here that the system that they're using to base this off of was ruled unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court in 1997, 2002, 2004, and I think most recently in 2007. Like, it's consistently ruled unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court. But this is, this is the model that public school districts are...
They continuously ignore that.
Yeah.
And I think the state of Ohio is like 41st lowest in this, in this, you know, all the states in support of public schools. They pay the lowest 41st out of 50. Which, can you just imagine? And then they wonder why, you know, we're so dependent on property taxes. Well, because we're not funded properly through the state.
Right, they won't fund us any other way.
All right, any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes. All right, with that passed, we're going to do Section 9, which is Public Participation. I have received no request to speak tonight. And so we'll just pass right over to that, and we'll do Section 9.5, which is Board Announcements, or our report section. First is Board Announcements. Does, so does any board member have anything that they would love to share?
Well, there's about to be a bunch of junk or treats.
There is.
So go to all the junk or treats, and I think even a fall festival at View. The fall sports are wrapping up. We had our last home game of football. What else?
There's all kinds of stuff going on.
I always, like, don't think about it until, right, till you say, we're going to have this.
Let Wendy and Tessa's playoff game this week, if anybody wants to come volunteer?
Right, so, so we're going to have what, about 3,000, 3,000 to 5,000 people at Shea Stadium?
That's about, yeah.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot.
There'll be a lot.
10 to about 8.
Any other announcements? We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Ronan?
Thank you, President Atwood. The first item is the Impact Report for Adopt a Class. And that's where businesses partner with a classroom and share activities and career information. And as you can see, we have some great partners who actually come into the classroom and work with the youngsters. Also, I'd like to do a shout-out to Shepherd Chemical. They are a long-term partner, and here they are in Norwood View, working with 5th graders. And many times, our partners also take the students on a tour of their facility and, and talk about careers that they could have, which really helps, I, I think as our students get older and get into high school and are thinking about what to do after graduation, I think these activities that started in elementary school helps them figure out what they'd like to do in life. All right, my next announcement is the Playground Beautification Project is complete. Williams was the last school on the list. So on October 13th, there is the ribbon cutting before and after its cut. And this is what the Williams Avenue Elementary Playground looks like. The students were so, so excited to finally get out and play because it really opened just two weeks ago. Now, just to remind everyone of all the other beautiful playgrounds we have. There's Norwood View Elementary, that was done, I believe, three years ago. Then we have Sharpsburg Primary. And I do want to mention that New City Presbyterian Church did donate that cover, so we're also able to use part of the playground as an outdoor classroom. And then there is Sharpsburg Elementary, that opened two years ago. So I want to thank everyone, board members, staff, PTOs, teachers, parents, our facilities people. It has been, well, actually, a long eight years when you consider construction of the buildings and now the beautification of outdoors. So that concludes my report. Thank you, everyone.
I have to say, my kids who were in high school saw those moss hills at Williams and said, what? We want moss hills? So they were impressed.
They do seem to like them. I was surprised.
I know they don't look like much, but the kids love them.
They do love them.
And the teenagers, too.
There's five or six people or children standing on top of those mounds. Who would have thought?
Thank you, Superintendent Ronan. We're going to move on, so we have a Great Ex Report. And since Ms. Ballard is not here with us tonight, we're going to skip over that. We already touched on the legislation through the Treasurers Report, the Finance Report. And to the Norwood Community Television Report, I'll just say they've done a fantastic job filming all of our fall sports, making sure that they're available for all the meetings that we've had and all the stuff that they do with the city. So they are severely underfunded, and that's something that's going to have to be addressed here soon. But, but, you know, Norwood Community Television does a fantastic job. I'll turn it over now to the Avenues for Success Report.
Thank you. After-school clubs have started. How exciting. I already have two sets of flower arrangements because both of my kids are doing floral club. And they do have an after-school driving thing, but it is just to get a voucher to take driving school. But I am reminded of that because my kiddo made me take her driving today. And she wants to do that program, too. So they are off and running. So you can still sign up. I mean, I did, I mean, I think you can. I hope Laura doesn't get mad about that, but I, I bugger and I say, oh, my kid wants to do this. And she helps me, so I think she'll help you, too. That's it.
All right, and that concludes all of our board reports. Next item on our agenda is the Me, Future Meeting Notification. So with, coming up with November, since all of us are going to be at Capitol Conference, we're only going to do one meeting instead of the traditional committee and regular board meeting. So that regular board meeting for the month of November is going to be on November 20th, 6:00 p.m. here. I'd like to make a motion that we approve future meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mrs. Rarica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
I was going to say, don't forget, because the day after that is the last day before Thanksgiving grace. And this year is the first year that we have the whole week, so don't forget, everybody. Monday, Tuesday, no school of Thanksgiving week.
Right, yep, it's the whole week.
It's new, so prepare now.
All right, item number 11 on our agenda, this is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.